Spot.
Right.
On the nose. You got it. Everybody working. Again, in office. Makes my commute terrible.
Yeah.
Good to go.
Okay. Like to call the regular meeting of the ION City Council of Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 to order. Janice, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Atlin.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Member Rhodes.
Here.
Mayor Ratten.
Here.
And Mayor LeFane.
Here. We have no closed session. Hey, you'd like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have no presentations or announcements. Uh, now we're going to open it up to public comment for any item that is not on the agenda.
Hello, council. My name's Lee Lockhart, President of the Amateur Chain Anglers Disc Golf Club. I do have two different subjects to speak on. I'll try to wrap it all into one three or four minute thing here, but uh, we were out there playing the other day and took notice to a new set of stakes that have been put in. Um, they're not the BMX track stakes, they're grade ticker stakes. The end one says storm drain end of pipe. And it looks like a thousand foot long straight line of pipe is about to be put in the area from Wildflower, right at the corner of baseball, all the way down to the back end of the elementary school. And it's, we're just trying to find out what it is, why it's there, what it's for, who's paying for it. Um, I mean, if that's a 24 inch line, it's like $50,000 worth of pipe. So I don't kind of want to know who's paying for that. But anyways, um, I've talked to various people. Even Ken Mackey said, I have no idea what that is. Nobody's been able to give me an answer what those stakes are for.
Will be able to give you.
Yeah, I would just like to know what, what that's for. Being that it's a natural drain anyways, it doesn't need a pipe. So, um, secondly, um, I'm here as a director at large for the Motherlode Youth Soccer League. Um, it was just brought up at our meeting last night that, uh, our fee will be possibly raised. And I just wanted to bring up the fact that, uh, you know, over the last decade or more, we've pretty much funded everything out there except for mowing. And the sprinkler systems we've brought, you know, we brought up at Parks and Rec that the sprinkler irrigation systems are subpar. Everything's broken. Water's leaking everywhere. It's inefficient. Uh, the water bill's probably high because of all the leaks that have been out there. There's absolutely no aeration done, which is I think supposed to be done by the city to actually get the water to penetrate. So it's just running off. Um, I mean, there's one meter for the entire park. So it's hard to say who's who out there, who's using what. Um, the fields aren't really irrigated in time after it starts to switch seasons. So then they play catch up and it's field starting to die. And as a farmer, you kind of know you need to keep up on the irrigation early on. Um, water trucks are out there filling off of hydrants that are connected to that meter. There's a big swamp, big old leak right in the middle of our fields on the north side. So I just, I would like to see all those kind of issues brought up and addressed before the discussion of, hey, we're going to raise your fee because you guys are using a lot of water and you're costing the city a lot of money. Um, cause I just, I think there's could be some type of efficiency brought into that system that would probably save that money. And let's remember soccer's for kids. We've got 952 kids registered last year. So we just, we don't really want to raise our fees and try to detour kids from playing soccer or make it harder on parents that can't afford it. We'd rather try to save the money where we can to make it, keep our costs down. I mean, that's the idea. Get more kids on the field. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Jonathan Mitchell, City Engineer. I'd like to go ahead and address one of the questions that, um, Mr. Lockhart had regarding the stakes. That's up.
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Uh, so, uh, Lee, great observation out there. We actually saw, uh, some frisbee golf happening, disc golf happening out there when we were doing a a walkthrough with those stakes. So what they are is there's an adjacent subdivision, Wildflower subdivision is unit one. And they're, uh, looking at, uh, possible drainage that would blow through on that alignment. And it's an alternate drainage that's being considered. There's more than one drainage option for that subdivision. And so what we asked is the developer stake it out. So as a city, we could walk that alignment. And so city staff has been walking that alignment. We may have, you may have seen us out there with our orange vests on and, um, you know, trying to understand it. It's a concept alignment at this point. It's not final. There's, you know, many different things that we're considering. It's not being.
The main concern, why would I be so concerned if part of the line after it goes on to the school property and there's.
I'm, I'm sorry, you guys, we, this, this is public comment. We can't go back and forth with discussion. Um, he just graciously stepped up just to answer your question. Yeah.
Yeah, be happy to talk.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Gary Thomas, 125 Maple Street, but I come to you as Director, District Two. In the words of Lyndon B. Johnson, I will not be seeking another term. So if somebody's interested in running for the water agency out there, I know there's a, there's been a few people, but I don't know, I'd like to make sure that everybody knows ahead of time so they can figure out if they want to file or not. So my warning shot across the bow.
Thank you, Gary.
Name is, uh, George Fota, and I live in Wildflower. And I've noticed lately at nighttime, we've been walking on the north side of Foothill, we had three streetlights. And they no longer are working now. And I just wonder why they're not working. If like in the Bay Area, usually the homeless come and steal the wire out of it. So I don't know if the lights are burned out or you guys didn't pay your PG&E bill. Or the wire's missing. So I wish Public Works would go out and check the light bulbs. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Can we check on that, George?
Yeah, they may not be ours. They may be PG&Es.
They might be PG&Es. Which they probably are. Uh, more public comment? Janice, anybody on Zoom? No hands raised? Okay, we're going to close public comment. I just want to bang that gap. Okay, item H is information only. It's a third quarter budget, actual detailed report, actual summary report and the budget schedule. Onto the consent calendar. Um, I would like to pull item one just for discussion.
Thanks.
Andy, we can, do we move it to the regular?
Second lap.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the action that you just took was just to pull something from it?
Yeah.
Yeah, no actions necessary to pull. You can take action to pull. Um, but if you're done pulling everything, then the procedure would be to adopt the consent calendar, the remaining, and then goes directly to the pulled item.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with just the warrants, item number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so just go to it now.
Yes.
Um, there's some confusion on the minutes of April 2nd. Uh, specifically the resolution, let me find it, I think it was H1. Uh, there are some council members who believe the resolution was passed, uh, impartial. Uh, it's for two items, but I don't recall it being passed. Um, I recall the topic being sent back to our city engineer for a follow-up report at our next meeting. But I know in discussion with, um, Councilman Ratten, she was under the impression two items were approved that were under the master servicing agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and the third was not approved, was pulled.
That is, that is what I remember.
That's what you remember, but that's not what, what's reflected in the, the minutes.
Well, the minutes might be more.
I don't recall, I recall you bringing it up, but I don't recall about.
Are you saying it was?
Well.
Well, there was no resolution adopted.
Right. Um, but there was discussion during that time of approving two items. We didn't, there was no staff report. That was the problem. We couldn't really differentiate what was what. Um, and what you have on here, I feel is correct, but.
So you, you, you think it was entirely pulled, everything?
Yes, that was my understanding.
My understanding. If it's different.
Well, it says here that it was pulled for discussion. And then I think during the discussion, we approved the, the small item, ticket items and the 450 was to come back, but that was just what I remember. And I could be wrong.
Don't remember a motion on those two, but I can go certainly go back and bring them back.
Alright.
I, I, I actually made the motion that we would pull the large item of West Yost. And have Jonathan review it. That's in the, that is sort of in the minutes, the bottom. Um, Councilmember Mitchell seconded it.
One of the things you can do is you, you can just, um, table this item for next meeting. Janice said that she would go through and listen to the recording to ensure that the, the minutes are accurate or, uh, bring back amended minutes and we can have those at our next council meeting, um, for you all to take action on.
Okay, so has any is, has any of these projects been started based upon the belief that two of the items were approved?
Yes. I think the, it was my error that I told Kathy, he's to proceed with item number one and, and two of the task orders. So I emailed her to stop until we get, have a, a general sense of what's going on.
Okay.
So that was my error.
And item one and two, those were the services that were under the master service agreement?
Yeah, the $20,000 service continuation and the, um, um, I think it was Title 22. Finish the Title 22 report.
Yeah, it's hard without it in front of us.
Yeah, it's hard to.
Um,
Can we ask that this whole item be brought back to us?
Absolutely. That's what, that's what I was recommending.
Okay.
Okay.
So yeah, let's just do that.
So, but some work was started on item one and two. Okay. And now it's.
Get an update at the time of what was done and where it's at. So do I need to make a motion for that?
No, the, um, we'll just take that direction. No action taken on this item. Be tabled for the next meeting.
Okay, so was it given to Will Dan?
Uh, they have it now.
Oh, you have it now? Okay. Sorry. Okay. Um, so that's all I need on that one. So then we'll go on to.
So do I need to, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes with the.
Yeah, so, um, we don't know if there's any amendments that need to be made. So I think what Janice was going to do was going to re.
Leave it.
Yeah, she was, she was going to listen to them and bring it back.
Alright, so I don't have to do anything.
Approve.
Okay, got it. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, on to the regular agenda. Can I get an approval?
Make a motion that we approve the regular agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just thought I'd do it for fun.
So just to be, just to be clear for, for your purposes, Janice, that was not approving all of the regular agenda items.
Oh, I was just.
Unless I was mistaken.
I, I just made a motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, we, we did that one before public comment.
Hmm.
Oh, on the consent calendar?
Keeping you on your toes, Andy.
Sorry.
Okay, so first up, uh, would be, uh, City Engineer Jonathan. Mitchell, with an update on the estimate for 17E Main Street, the Main Street building, update on the sewer rate study and an update on Foothill Boulevard Wildflower subdivision.
Okay, I'm back. Jonathan Mitchell, City Engineer. Um, I'm going to provide a three updates here. These are all oral updates. And one thing I wanted to state for council is if there's not a staff report on an item, that means it's been expedited. And it was a decision made, uh, with staff that we would expedite those items with no staff report for some strategic reason or some reason that was deemed appropriate to raise it to council, uh, more expeditiously. Uh, typically there would always be, um, a staff report. And so it does seem like as I'm before you this evening with three items, um, without a staff report. Uh, and that sometimes is kind of the norm, um, on the engineering. It just shows you how many items we're trying to expedite on the engineering side. But some of these also today are, uh, they're questions that may have come, um, you know, real very recently as well, last four or five days. So I'm going to start out with an update on Foothill Boulevard. Um, and, uh, Foothill Boulevard, it's, uh, a portion of the Wildflower subdivisions, um, which is, uh, not quite complete at this point. So as, as we've got unit one that's being built out and other future phases of the Wildflower subdivision build out within the Wildflower subdivision, it's ultimately going to result in some, uh, further utilities subgrade on Foothill Boulevard. And so typical practice is if you have a subdivision where, uh, there's a future phase, it's going to tear up a road. We don't put that final two inch lift on that road until after all of the subgrade utilities are done. That way you're not left with a road that you've, you've finalized, it's beautiful. And then you cut right through it, uh, and trench right down the middle of it. And then you've got a brand new stripe that's, uh, four inches or four feet wide. And so, uh, that's, that's an update on Foothill Boulevard. There's a few things, um, that we have been, as a city, as a city engineer, been in communication with developer on that. So we did an inspection, uh, that included Foothill and its, uh, elements that are associated with unit two and unit three and unit five. And we made, uh, observations on items that need to be complete. And, uh, and so Foothill Boulevard, uh, does require some items that need to be complete. And these, again, that's, that's, it's nothing unusual. It's very normal not to have a last two inch lift. It's something that we, it's done all the time. Um, and then the other items are just minor items that the developer's been very responsive about, um, managing, which is, uh, some stormwater. We observed that the BMPs, best management practices on stormwater, uh, require some cleanup at the drainage inlets. Uh, and so that's something that they're going to go ahead and pump out is all the subgrade stormwater items so that we can be assured that they're going to function properly when we go into next year's rain events. This is not a rush item, but it's something that we did observe. We had some pretty incredible rain flow, um, at concentrated times during this last season. And so, uh, that compromised some of those best management practices. So we want to see that those are pumped out and ready to go for next year. And, uh, other than that, on full, or on Foothill Boulevard, there's some, uh, signage and str, or signage that we're looking at. Um, and I believe, uh, Chief Alfred could provide some more details on that. Uh, and we've been in discussion as an engineering team as well and continue to support that effort. Um, but I think that's related to no parking signs. So.
Could you expand a little bit on the no parking?
Um, so I can expand, uh, and this is real time. Uh, so I have looked with, uh, Chief Alfred and I can say that that, uh, foothill is accepted um, on that segment that we were looking at, chief.
When you say accepted, you mean accepted by the city?
It's accepted. The offer of dedication was accepted. And the reason I say that is because I hadn't had an opportunity to communicate that, John, before this meeting. Cause it was right before this meeting, we reviewed it. But, uh, Chief Alfred, you could go ahead and, uh, talk about the signs. Um, but my full scope on that so far has just been to determine, uh, if the city hasn't accepted that or not, which we have.
So. So, so now what we'll do is, uh, the engineer will, uh, will do the survey on Foothill and make sure it's all within the legal limits. And then we'll do the amendment to the, um, municipal code to have that side of the street added to it for, uh, no parking. And that'll come before council once all that's finished.
Thank you, chief. Yeah, and there are some unique, it's on the way that, that roadway was laid out and designed. There's a, the right of ways 26 feet, um, on the, I believe it's the east. Yeah, it's 26 feet on the east of the center line and it's 30 feet on the west of the center line. Uh, and so that's one of the reasons that, uh, Chief Alfred is, is noting that it does require a little bit more engineering investment, investigation per the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is what is implemented when we put up any kind of signage or striping on a, on a public road. So that's what we're going to do. Um, uh, next item is, uh, is, uh, so any, any questions on Foothill before I move on to the next?
No.
Okay. No questions on Foothill, so I'm going to go ahead and move to the next item. It's a, uh, East Main Street, 17 East Main Street, which is the, um, the structure just adjacent to us, right, right behind me here. And so this is a preliminary investigation that I was asked to perform, that we were asked to perform, uh, you know, engineering function on the structure to determine, you know, what would the cost be to bring that up to some reasonable function as a, a city police facility? And so I have looked at that structure, um, and I looked at it earlier this week. So that's one reason why we don't have a staff report on that item. Uh, but we have done some, uh, engineering review on it, uh, even though it's been quick order. And the assumptions that we made is, so we took some plans, preliminary plans were prepared for that structure. We took measurements on the square feet of the structure, upper and lower floor. And we compared it, uh, and then also in the back of the structure, there's some design where an addition is to be made. So that whole structure is to extend out the back. I don't know if you're all familiar with it, but basically it stops, it stops there. It's already extended past the original brick, uh, for the building, which is historic. And then it moves out past that in the plans. So we took the square feet for demolition of the existing improvements that are in there. And we compared those with the state average, which we use RS means data. It's a subscription-based engineering data, uh, based on current, um, bid costs throughout the state. And so we use that for the structure and that type of demolition that would be required based on the number of square feet. Then we applied, uh, a standard square footage for what the improvements would be for standard police facility, uh, which again, uh, we're taking that same number of square feet, but we reduce it a little bit, understanding that you're not improving every square foot of that structure for police use. So we looked at those, uh, conceptual plans and we adjusted them to based on the square footage that we think actually needs to be improved. Uh, and then we applied, once again, uh, state average data, RS means data, which is standard bid data across the state for that type of facility. Um, and so then, so that's gives us a ballpark, basically demolition and construction. Um, and then a separate cost for addition, which is the extension out, making that building actually larger than it is today. Um, and then we went through and we added, uh, based on this, walking the structure, there are some unsafe conditions there and there's some unusual, uh, there's some unusual grades. Uh, there's, uh, some deterioration of some of the fundamental structures there, load bearing elements of the structure. Uh, and, uh, staircase access, uh, there, there's, the list is long. Um, unsafe wiring, um, ventilation, uh, it's, there's, there's quite a number of challenges with that structure that would need to be addressed before we would, uh, move into some type of long-term, uh, occupation or improvement. And then, um, so we added those in. We also would expect there's some remediation for materials, uh, so such as asbestos or other hazardous materials that are likely in that age of a structure that have to be dealt with when you put out a public project like this as a public works project. So we've added all of those together. And I'll, I'll just, I'll tell you, at this point, we don't have a documented, um, opinion of probable cost. But one of the goals was to come before, uh, council this evening with the ballpark, um, based on what I just described as the process. And the hard cost for construction based on those processes ranges in the five to $600,000 range. Um, you know, we're talking about remediation, demolition, construction and expansion, as well as correction of, uh, of the structural elements. So it's, it's a pretty extensive list. Now, uh, given, uh, so typically then what we would do is we add a contingency to that hard cost of construction value. Uh, and then we would add some percentage for design and permitting, which usually is the, you know, in the 10 to 15% range. Um, and then we would add a contingency typically in the 20% range on, on a plan like this where you don't know where the bids are going to come back. So you would add a contingency just to capture that. So uh, what I'm, what I'm reporting tonight on this is we know it's, it's quite a high ballpark. And all four to 500,000 is a lot. And we know that there's contingencies that we would typically add on pop it up for soft costs such as engineering, permitting, remediation, uh, some of these other things. And so the intent of, uh, staff was to come before you tonight and give you an idea before council advi, um, uh, provided, uh, direction on whether or not, uh, more detailed engineer's estimate should be prepared.
Thank you, Jonathan.
You're welcome.
That building should have been condemned by the city, not purchased.
No.
Well, I won't be back up there on the second floor. I'll tell you that.
Uh, yeah.
So Chief Alfred and I were holding the staircase for one another so each of us could get up it safely. Um, but even the bolts that are holding that, uh, at the base are, you know, I would have concern about shear. So, yeah.
Okay, um, we want to move on to Foothill and then.
Yeah, it was the sewer.
I mean sewer. Oh, we went out of order.
Um, I, that was my, my fault there. So I went out of order.
No, go ahead.
Um, I did, I did, I went, uh, from the bottom to the top. Now I'm going to hit the middle.
Okay, perfect.
So sewer rate study. Um, so this is, uh, a study and I want to be a little very brief background on, on rates here specifically. So there's two types of sewer, um, fees that you'll normally have. This is a, a rate, not a fee. So I'm, I'm sorry. So to be clear, uh, this does not capture capital, uh, connection costs. So for example, if a new developer would come into the city and they have X number of homes and those homes need to be hooked up so that they're provided sewer, uh, in the future. That is a connection fee and it is separate from what I'm talking about tonight, but I want to take this time to provide that insight. And so when you're evaluating what that connection fee is, that would be paid by a new developer per unit, that is a separate item that we would, you know, likely be evaluating at staff in the future. But the connection fee, um, feeds into an account, which is then used for the infrastructure required to collect that sewer then from the new development. And it's not just the in-street, um, collection, like the sewer main and the laterals. But it's also if there's a list station required, for example, because the sewer can't gravity flow, then you would require a list station or often referred to as a pump station, which essentially puts that, uh, sewer up a delta and provides it, uh, access to the treatment facility. And so that would be that whole process from the time that it's collected from a property line of the home, uh, through the lateral, connected to a main, through a lift station or not through a lift station, it's gravity fed ultimately to a treatment plant. And if that treatment plant needs some kind of upgrades in order to handle the new capacity that will be placed on that treatment plant by a new development, all of that falls under the connection fee. Um, and on the agenda tonight, uh, when I'm update, I'm talking about the rate study. That is not the connection fee. So it's basically everything except that. The, the rate study is the fee that we pay as consumers every month or as residents every month for the treatment of, and, and the fact that this sewer is, is being removed from our homes and it's being processed and disposed of in a safe way according to, uh, uh, state standards. And so that is the operational cost of managing the sewer that's introduced into the system on a day-to-day basis. Completely separate than the capital cost of new construction and pipes to accommodate new development. So for this item, the city is actively, uh, performing a study to, uh, ensure that the operational cost, that monthly cost that residents are paying is the right amount to capture the cost of the city to actually process that waste, uh, according to state standards. And that is what's being, um, done right now is we have, uh, uh, the firm under contract to perform that work. They have come back to us with, uh, engineering staff of various questions, uh, you know, specific to what our operational costs are uh, as a city. They then perform a nexus study. And the reason behind this is that any fee or rate that is passed on to the public must be commensurate with the service provided. In other words, we cannot make a profit as a city off the rates that we pass on to the consumer. And so a nexus study is the state, um, instrument, which. And so a nexus study is the state um instrument which performs that. And it is a study that says that this is the work and the cost of work being performed. This is the fee that's being um paid are the two matching. And it the it also must uh not include things that are unrealistic. So for example, if there's. Some maintenance because in in a rate, so we talked about the connection and the new capital, that's a separate item. But for the processing of the sewer, if there's some maintenance that needs to be required, for example, there's a clay pipe. That's running under a street and we know clay pipes are subject to deterioration and leakage. So we can identify the replacement of a clay pipe, for example, within that monthly operating cost. Because it's fixed infrastructure designed to treat that sewer on a day to day basis. If it's dilapidated and it requires maintenance, then we identify that cost in typically a five year capital improvement program. And that five year program is reasonable that we would address the dilapidation and the condition of that pipe within that five year period. If it's not reasonable that we get to it, we don't include it in the rate study. In other words, if it's a wish list, that it's something that needs to be done ten years from now. Or we're not just replacing a piping kind, we wanna upgrade it in some way. That it's not commensurate with the the needs of the public. It's something some upgrade that uh goes above and beyond the operational cost. Uh those things aren't included in a in a in a rate study like this. So in other words, we don't wanna say that. Fifteen years from now, we're gonna do this. And so from today, we're gonna start increasing the cost of the system. We wanna only pass along costs that we're very confident the city is in fact going to incur. And um and so that's what's underway right now as a as an update on that. And the schedule I know has been disseminated to um the electeds. Um and so we're we're on track on schedule uh at this point. So uh I believe those are the the three items um for engineering report and appreciate your uh. Listening to me for that period of time. So if there any questions, happy to ask, answer those, otherwise um.
No, that was a great explanation as far as the sewer rate study.
Good. And I will say that the city is evaluating uh other fees as well. Uh it's just that's on a separate project and a separate path than this item altogether. So in other words, the connection fee could be evaluated in the near future. It's just not on the same schedule.
Okay. Any council member have any clarifying questions for Jonathan?
Mommy?
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
I do have a question.
I'm Larry Rhodes. I wonder if you guys have taken consideration that we've been subsidized in tertiary plants since two thousand. I think fifteen at I think last year we took fifty thousand dollars. Out of our money and I don't know if it come out of our capital improvement fund or what, but it's nine hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. And I like now we do a rate study when you took our money and we're not even hooked up supposedly to the tertiary plant. And how we need a rate study when we already borrowed nine hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. Nobody has an answer, huh? Thank you.
I have a clarifying.
Okay.
I I have a clarifying question. Uh is the rate study you're doing inclusive of tertiary or is it only for the wastewater treatment plant?
Just my answer can be clearly heard. It does not include tertiary. Yeah, it's just the treatment.
So it's just the wastewater treatment plant itself?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh anymore? Public comment on this topic or or? Actually, all three topics, right? Foothill. East Main. And the sewer rate study. No, Janice, anybody on? Okay, we're gonna close public comment and then open it up for council discussion. Oh, we do have someone. Okay, we've got a raised hand.
Yes, good evening. Simple question. What is the ETA for the completion of the city study for the waste fees?
So, excuse me, I don't have the details scheduled in front of me right now, but I can uh report back to uh council on that through an email. Uh but in the neighborhood of I I believe off the top of my head, I believe it's about four months.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. So August, September timeframe. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not. We can't go back and forth, Jonathan, on a public comment.
I was gonna say, I just remembered. It's October roughly.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on social media now? All right, thank you. Uh close public comment, open it up for council discussion on any of the items on number one.
I have nothing.
We'll move on to item two. Adoption of resolution number twenty twenty four dash twelve authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four operating budget. Jody.
So I'm here before you to talk about budget amendments and there is a quite a few in this list. Um let me put my glasses real quick. I did do a staff report that kinda summarizes what's going on with it. Um just and then I also did a page that's kinda summarizes each um of the general. Um the revenues and the expenses, just kinda give an idea of where we're at. I did wanna make one comment that um something that got changed after this all got presented and sent out. And that was for a um. The beautification that we had in there. I had taken out twelve thousand or eight thousand. Look at my other notes. Um because we hadn't been using it, but then after we brought this all up and then I found out that we are gonna do something at the. Rover. Oh, Heath No. So we have some plan in there in June, so we probably are gonna need that money after all. So. In a revised one, it's taken out, so it would change the um budget amount. By that amount. And I thought I kept a copy of the. Unupdated ones, I would know the amount, but I think it was like eight thousand. So and I'm not sure that we'll need it all, but we thought we'd keep it in there just um to have it as a holding place. Um that's my favorite thing and I say it a lot is I like to start with the revenue and um. As you can see, some things were over budget, some things were under budget. It was kind of a wash. I will say one of the things I learned going through the budget for this next year. Is especially with the expenses that are allocated over different funds. A lot of our information that shows expenses for prior years is only the general fund. So it doesn't show the whole budget for like public works, which is over maybe five funds or eight funds. So you have to go back. Budget's kinda easy because you have those numbers from when we got him approved, but when you have to go back and find those actual expenses. You gotta look in the general fund, you gotta look in the gas tax fund, you gotta look in the sewer fund. And any other funds that it might have hit and then add it all together for each item. And it is a little time consuming. We're trying to find a shortcut. But um and I think that's why it's hard to get some of these budget numbers or maybe it's been hard hard in the past. And hard to be accurate because something. It looks like, oh, we only used twenty thousand last year. Well, that was general fund, but maybe we used twenty thousand in gas tax. So I was using whole numbers throughout the whole department and or fund. And from all that. Um I just made some recommendations where I think we're gonna end up at the end of the year, looked at where our budget is. If it's more or less, I made the amendment. I'm open to suggestions. If you guys know something that's coming up, especially if it's an expense or. Something that maybe just slipped my mind. I'm willing to make a couple notes on these pages and bring this back to you. We don't have to have this done today. But I thought I'd bring it before you just to. I like to get done, obviously, by the end of the fiscal year. Um just looks good when we do our audits. Um and the other part too is I did kind of a summary luckily. And I'm very pleased about this. Most of our funds are gonna be increased. Um the one that was actually just mentioned was our wastewater treatment plant and it's just the O and M part of it, the operation and maintenance. Is gonna need an additional three hundred and thirty two thousand. Our revenues and our expenses, once you look at the um. We actually have a little bit more revenue than we expected, but our expenses are much higher. We're gonna actually take a bit of a hit on that. But I did look up where our fund balance was at the end of March and we have over a million in that fund. So we do have enough to cover it. But that's just some information we're gonna need when we move this forwards to really look at these numbers. Make sure that we're a little bit more online because it's hard to come up with three hundred and thirty two thousand. Fourth month or tenth month of the year, but luckily we had some money in there, but it's not something we normally. Would like to do. I know most people that do budgets likes to be really conservative. We always like to have a little bit more money. Than less. Um and then I made a note in the staff report and it just, I think it's kinda typical of all. Cities or stuff, our swimming pool, it's just it always gonna run in the negative unless things change. But that's just a general fund. We have extra money in the general fund that we're gonna realize even just with this budget amendment that will cover that offset. So we're still gonna be more than ahead as far as what's gonna be a balance for a general fund at the end of the year. So I'll let you guys ask questions because I don't know if there's anything. I don't wanna go through it and then your questions be something different than when I noticed or thought about or.
Any clarifying questions for Jody from council?
I have none.
You guys are on the finance committee, so you already saw this.
Yeah, we still. I just um. Do you know, because this is now the third quarter, what is this an accum- obviously it's an accumulation of. Three quarters, but was there a quarter that it really jumped up or was it basically? You know, like the wastewater going in the hole every single month and here we are, or was there a big jump?
I will say wastewater, interestingly, that you said that all our chemicals were bought in the first four months, I noticed. It it really looked like we would look then, we were like, wow, we're not, we're not gonna make it through the year. But I feel like we maybe we got in bulk, maybe we got a discounted rate. And we haven't bought since. I think the last one we bought was like November, December. I don't have the exact date, but it was late into the year. We did it July and then December and we haven't used. Had to buy any more again. So there were a couple of things like that. I will say too, like we do the Calpers unfunded very first month because we save a percentage if we pay it upfront. We don't pay it every month. You save, I think it's two to five percent. So some of those things we do front load. Um but I will, yeah, wastewater treatment and public works had some big things at the beginning of the year. And the other one little, well, not little, uh we did an ergonomic study for the office here. And it was recommended that some of us get new chairs to keep, you know. So that costs a little extra, but.
You get wooden benches.
A bouncy ball.
No, those are dangerous. Don't get those.
Yeah, workers comp might not like that.
No, but we don't.
But I don't, I looked through this year and looked at it. I mean, last year, this time, the next frame, just to see if there's any things that come up maybe in. May or June that I might not be aware of, and I didn't see anything big. It just seems like we kinda get into a rhythm. So. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jody.
Okay.
We'll open it up to public comment.
I will move so they can talk.
Oh, well, thank you. Oh, gosh, thank you. I am not seeing any public comment. Anyone on Zoom? No? Okay, we'll close public comment. Move on to item number three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, community facilities district CFD recommendation regarding annual increase.
Real quick before we go on to that, though, I'm gonna need approval of the.
The resolution.
Of the resolution, please.
Yep, missed that one.
That's all right.
Can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four twelve? Uh resolution of City Council, the city of Bayonne authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four operating budget.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For this next one, she did a lot of these worksheets with me. Um the next item is our CFD. Um which is our community facility district and for the crowd, that's um the two newest sub- subdivisions. Castle Oaks and Wildflower. And what happens is that they have a um special tax that is applied to their property taxes. For police, fire, landscape for some, lighting and landscape for others. As things were being built, different CFDs were, what's the word for it? Yeah, we're kind of figured out what was needed. So each year, it's up to city council to decide we can do a. It says in the the paperwork, two to four percent. But in the last three years, it has been the recommendation of the city council to do a zero percent inflationary increase. And what we have in our staff report is a lot of information about a couple of different options. And we gave you some numbers to show you how those options will affect us financially or fiscally. Um the first option is to do no increase and we just collect the levy that we've been collecting for the last couple of years. Um there's one where we increase it by four percent, which is the max. And we can only do the max if the um index is actually the CPI index is above four, which it is. So we can only do that when it's higher. That the one is a two percent. And then there's one that we do an increase to just the ones that are lower. Because there's some that pay less than others and not increase the ones that pay more. And there's some worksheets here and I'm gonna see if you have any more to add because like I said, Andrea spent. Weeks on this.
So we gave this presentation at the finance committee and so I'll just give you kind of a brief walkthrough of the staff report like I did for the finance committee. So basically, the history of these CFDs is. The original Castle Oaks project came in, it went into default, the bonds went into default. We had two hundred and eleven homes that could never get out of their bond. So JTS, when they came in, one of the um criteria that for this whole workout was a bond workout. And at that time, there was um decided we needed to something, we could not cover more police and fire with new homes that were coming in. So we created a mu- immunity facilities district. So and we knew at the time this was not going to be clean from the very beginning because those two original two hundred and eleven homes. Did not have a CFD on them. They paid fifty two dollars and thirty cents um for their lighting and landscaping. So um and then as then JTS looked at and they bought like the. Edgebrook was half built and they bought the remainder of it and kind of bought it in. So then we had a CFD that included police and fire. So if you look at it. Why it gets messy and um you have basically different rates for different people out there. So you have four seventy five that pay a high rate of eight fifty seven. You have a hundred and fifty one homes that pay the four forty six sixty eight. And then you have Wildflower who pays um the four thirty five ninety eight. So those are basically the main groups that pay the CDF in the city of Bayonne. The Old Town does not pay a CDF and then you have those two hundred and eleven homes plus four more lots that play a just the lighting and landscape. So what happened is a couple of years ago, um we had some um interested citizens come regarding their CFDs and why they were all different. And trying to get information and kind of get this all figured out and kind of find some parity. They created a CFD committee. They've been meeting, I guess, the last couple of years? Two and a half years. I've only been involved for a couple of months. Um and so one of the options. We took the information to them and one of the recommendation that the CFD committee came back was was to keep it at the twenty twenty one rate. Which for the last three years, it's been frozen at that rate while this all gets sorted out. So that was their recommendation. So as staff, we came back to analyze the data. So when we analyzed the data. We're not comfortable recommending that. So we gave some other recommendations based on the numbers. And we had uh given option number two and option number three and then at our finance, last finance meeting, we had. Councilman Ratten suggested an option number four, which is the one you see stated here, which is a an increase but at a lower rate.
It's hard to discuss this one without discussing item number four.
Well, they're separated for a reason. They're not related in the sense that. This one has to be decided to give direction to staff because we have to. This one has to be decided to give direction to staff because we have to get in on the tax rule. The vote is another whole separate topic that will be within the year. This one is, has to be decided. Yes, it could be yes, it could be no. If it is yes, then at what rate? If it's no, nothing changes, but it has to be decided. Separate from the next item on the agenda. Just so we know what to do with tax rule.
Really, that's the question here. What are we going to do with the tax?
Yes, so we just need to know for the twenty-four, twenty-five tax rules, uh, the recommended action, what we're going to do for the twenty-four, twenty-five tax rules. So what happens is, and you guys probably remember this from last year, whatever you decide for the tax rule, then we go back and each APN has to be assessed. We bring that back to you, you guys have to approve it and then we have to get it to the county. So that timeline starts to get really tight the closer we get to June. So that's why this one, we're saying we would like a decision on, as opposed to the other one, we have time. It's not. Is, we don't have a deadline.
Understood.
I'll get a couple of comments. I'll make it super quick because we did go over this with the uh, finance committee. And if anyone ever wants to spend a few hours talking about it, it's just chemical. But um, the whole reason we started off the committee a couple of years ago was because it's really not equitable within Castle Oaks. There's people that are paying, you know, double whatever people are paying, they live right across the street. That doesn't make any sense. There's also homes which I am yet to prove, but I will.
I'm waiting.
I know you are. And uh, there's, because there were homes built without a final map and they never got a CFD on it at all. So there's those in there. So there's, there's some that are paying fifty bucks, there's some that are paying zero, there's some paying four hundred and fifty, some paying. Eight fifty, some paying landscaping, some not paying landscaping, okay? Um, and then, then you hear that it's, hey, it's new development and they got to pay. And I'm like, that's fine. I, I agree with that. But if all new development post two thousand and five was to pay, I would say absolutely, or whatever the date was that this came up with. So um, my whole goal was to try and make this equitable. Um, and it isn't right now. Uh, so it kind of really does go to the next um, topic, but on this um. It, it did take a couple of years to do so. We are behind on the taxes, but that wasn't really anyone's fault other than, you know, COVID and. Staffing issues and turnover of city manager and everything else. And then finding all documents and finding out where all the money went and et cetera. So I think we're in a good spot now that everything's been identified. Everyone has a clear understanding of where it is. Um, and as I said in the finance committee, if you were to do the maximum increase, it brings in twenty-two thousand dollars to the. Police and fire, which is really, I don't think it's either here nor there. Um, personally, if you do the option three, that's six thousand dollars, that's even less. I liked that you did put in option four, which is two percent for everybody. But my, my main goal on this is just to try and bring some parity somewhere down the road. And um, and that's what we'll talk about in the, in the next subject, but um, this, the, the committee did. Say they recommended no increase and there was opportunity at the committee level to, to bring this to them and say, hey, this is why we don't agree with you. Rather than let the committee make a recommendation to the council and then have the staff make a recommend, recommendation to the council. I'd rather that it was all worked out at the committee level and then one solid recommendation because now it's like. Well, do I listen to the committee or do I listen to the staff? So.
It was taken to the committee.
And they did.
When they heard it, that was their recommendation as staff, we have to analyze the data. And we cannot in good conscience, we're already a loss of revenue of a hundred and three thousand dollars in the last three years. So and analyzing the data. We're not comfortable.
Was that information given to the committee?
Yes.
They had that information?
And I understand where their point of view is coming from. They just want this fixed and equalized and. You know, they keep waiting for it to happen. So every year it doesn't happen. That's why this keeps getting frozen. So I understand their point. But just our goal, I mean, our job as staff is to look out for the best for the city. And Jody and I were not comfortable of that's what's best for the city as a whole. That's why we gave, came up with other options. It's your choice which option you choose. That's why we presented the CFD one that they gave us and we're very upfront saying, this is what they said, but we can't agree with it. And then um, Councilman Ratten gave us feedback at the finance committee. So we've had feedback from both committees and this is why we came up with these options.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
So I got a question. So let's say we go around item two. How does that equalize anything with the people of Castle Oaks that are paying one fifty-one to the ones?
It doesn't. So that's what the number three was, was to raise the lower ones and leave the, those four hundred and seventy-five people. That's why the uh, actual.
Okay, got it.
Dollar amount is so much less because four hundred and seventy-five would stay frozen and those other people would kind of move up closer to them.
Are they all getting the same services?
Well, yeah, they're all at Castle Oaks. There's nothing.
Oh, you're talking Castle, okay.
Well, Castle Oaks and Wildflower. There's two hundred and five in Wildflower.
But Wildflower doesn't get landscape.
They don't pay for land, lighting and landscape and half of the hundred and fifty-one and two hundred and fifteen. Well, they pay fifty.
You need a scorecard for this.
Yes, the two hundred and fifteen pay fifty-two dollars and thirty cents, a hundred and fifty-one don't pay any lighting and landscaping. That's what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so in Castle Oaks, there is no parity.
So on item three, where's the six thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-four cents go?
It goes to police and fire and a little bit of four hundred and seventy-five of those, one seventy-seven for each one goes to lighting and landscaping. I have a, if you look at the spreadsheet, it's broken down on um. Uh, I don't have that one for you. So basically, the only ones that pay into the lighting and landscaping of that money are the four hundred and seventy-five. And it's a hundred and seventy-seven for each one.
So. Andy, could you speak to? The process and the length of time it would take to, if, if we did decide to put this on the ballot?
Well, now you're jumping in.
That's your next item.
Oh, gosh.
That's what I said.
It's hard to do them separate from one.
Well, or maybe we could have put that first.
And that's, the, the steps are, the first, there's, first two pages of staff report have.
Oh, there's two steps to the staff report.
No, there's uh, agenda J four. And it has a formation, seven step process, if I have identified.
Got it. Okay. Does council have any other questions on this item? No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Hang on a minute, I'm trying to catch up. Now I lost my.
I got one other thing I'd like to say. Nothing against the police, but six grand to me to the police department is really nothing. And we can do something with it, but. I'd be totally fine decreasing the other ones down to where the other ones were to make it even. We have other ways of getting you six thousand dollars. I mean, to, to make it fair, you know. Six thousand dollars is, is nothing, but I think it should be fair. That's my.
Okay, I'd like to open number three up to public comment.
Gary Thomas, one twenty-five Maple Street, and I sit as the chair on the CFD committee. We've been to. Probably too many meetings over the last two and a half years, I think Mike said, but. On the other hand, not near enough. Our last meeting was January thirtieth, so no, we didn't really have all the information. Mike might shoot me for this one, but. As a past council member, sometimes you better listen to your finance committee. More than, we didn't get all that full information, I don't believe, on what the finances were and everything else and what the needs and so forth of the city are. So as much as I appreciate. The help from the rest of the committee and so forth. The city has to do what the city has to do for, for the fees and stuff. And I fully understand the separation on number four. I might have comments on that later, but. I wasn't in those finance committees. The last meeting was January thirtieth that we had. We're switching horses. Sorry, George, you don't look like a horse. But uh, we're switching horses and everything and. It's really been kind of a blur. I thought that we were really close to. Coming up with some pretty good decisions and so forth on, on if we had more time and more meetings and so forth. It just was a kind of a, too much of a blur to make. We didn't have the information on that finance. And I think Dominic and Diane sit on and so forth that Andrea advised you on at that time, so. You got to really heavily weigh on that. Thank you.
Um, just for clarification, you're talking about your CFD committees, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And they're talking about the finance committee. But you're saying you didn't have the information they had. Okay, I got.
That's true, Allison.
Okay.
We did not have the finance committee findings. Which is what you go on, facts and findings for our CFD meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on item three?
Good evening. My name is Mike Evans and I am on the CFD committee. Um, but I'm not here speaking for the committee, okay? I'm just speaking as a uh, person who pays into the CFD, so. Um, I want to talk about the inequities. Uh, of the, of the CFDs. I see that there's two of them. Um, when I bought my property, I was aware of the CFD. What I wasn't aware of was that sixty percent of the city does not pay into a CFD. And the majority of the money that's paid by myself and others. Goes to augment the police and fire budgets. Which the other sixty percent of the, of the city uses, which is common sense. It's, you know, that, that's the right thing to do. Um, I'm not here to uh, advocate for taking money away from the police and fire. That's, that's not my position. I was, I was a public safety officer in Santa Clara County for thirty years. So I know what it takes, you know, to keep a city safe. And if our city's not safe, we're not going to be vibrant, we're not going to be successful. Chief Mackey and Chief Alfred, I think they do a fantastic job. I have no problems with um, with their, with their leadership or, or uh, supplying them with the funds that they need. So let me just state that upfront. Um, the inequities that I see. Uh, the first one is. The fact that uh, sixty percent of the city doesn't pay into the CFD, forty percent does. Um, this will probably bleed a little bit into number four, but I'm going to mention anyways, uh, I would recommend that we have an election, okay? The other, the other uh, inequity that I see is, is within the CFDs themselves. Uh, Councilman Atlin brought this up. People across the street are just paying a lot less. Um, so I'm going to speak to that. If. If an election is held and it doesn't pass, I would like to tie. The proposal that I'm about to speak into that election. Um, and it would be this, um, to bring some um, uh, uh, equa, or equity. To um, this kind of this whole mess is that. We freeze the rate increases on the, on the uh, people that are paying eight fifty-seven. And we allow the people that are not paying that in the CFDs. To um, uh, be increased. Now, if you figure at. Three percent, which is the, the average between in the C, uh, the CPI. My calculations, I, I think you could achieve parity. Within these CFDs within about eight or nine years. And I, I don't think that that's, at, at least we'd, you know, be on a, on a, on a path to some kind of fairness here. The um.
The. Mike, you have one minute left.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. So that would be my recommendation. Um, I, I don't think we're gonna um. Oh, I know what I want to say. Once parity is achieved, and I would, I, I would um. Uh, define parity as being within fifty dollars of each other. We could average those CFD uh, fees. Uh, and um. And then we'd start, and then we'd start out that, everybody would start that, that's in a CFD at that amount. And then we would uh, again, start the increases on everyone. My CFD, the one I'm in, approximately two hundred dollars of it is lighting, landscape and maintenance. So I would separate that out. And that leaves me paying six hundred and fifty dollars for the police and fire. Where the other CFDs are paying approximately four hundred and fifty dollars. So the difference is about two hundred dollars and that's where, that's where. Uh, I say we could achieve parity in, in about eight, eight, nine, ten years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
I make a correction.
Sure.
Gary Thomas again. Andrea says that we have. The financial numbers and so forth like that. They just were not the updated actuals and so forth for the last couple of months.
Thank you. Uh, any more public comment on item three? No one on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on to item number four, discussion of creating a citywide CFD.
Well, do you want to?
We got it.
Should we got to do something?
I gotta do something.
One.
Nice try. Can I get a motion? Uh, well, no, we've got to decide what we're going to do.
Well, there's four options here, right? Let's break it down. There's four options here. Option number three is what some people that are paying the eight fifty would be happy. To see going forward if there was a citywide ballot and it didn't pass, so, so that was uh. So having, with that being said, um, that's a pretty small increase. Um, I personally believe that six thousand dollars, just like Stacy said, was, that's not even six thousand, it's four thousand and two thousand for the fire department, so. Um, as long as we were moving forward with trying to make this equitable, I'd like to throw the staff a bone too. So um, I mean, uh, it's either for me, it's either three or four. Um, so just go out there, I'll, I'll make a motion to take step number three. Feel free to disagree. And remember, this is just for this year and then next year could be whatever the new council decides, so.
Yeah. Yeah, this is just for this tax rule.
I, I'd like to make a motion. For option number four and to include in that option number four, a continuation of the CFD committee and their meetings.
So to be clear, number four is increase the amount by percentage using the minimum annual increase of two percent for all CFDs.
So being that there's two, there's two motions on the floor.
I've got a legal question. So what if Dominic picks one, I pick two and three and four?
The last one gets voted on first.
That's correct. So right.
Then we don't have a second on either of them.
That's right. That's exactly, so you all, you all are falling to two motions on the floor, neither, neither of them have seconds.
Okay.
And this is just for this year?
Yes, this tax rule.
This tax rule.
One year.
One year.
Can I ask one more question?
It's been frozen for three.
What would you guys recommend?
Well, they have their.
Well, I have my recommendations.
They're in front of you. They're right in front of you.
We thought a lot about these recommendations. Um. I do like uh, the comment that was made, if you're looking to get the parity, it would be raising some and excluding the others. Um, if you're looking at just to, you know, that helps you get there slowly until you have a vote or if the vote doesn't pass or whatever on our next item we're talking about. That's the only one that addresses the parity.
Which, and which option is that?
Three.
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 I'll second Dominic's.
Actually, we got to vote on Diane's first.
That's not second.
Oh, you didn't get a second?
Yeah.
Well, I'm really confused now.
So, okay, so, so from a, from a procedural standpoint, um, we have a live motion now, so we have first and second, so Dominic has a motion. If there is no second to Member Ratten's motion, Member Ratten's motion would, would die. There is a mo, if there is a second to Member Ratten's motion, Member Ratten's motion gets voted on first. Then uh, Member Atlin.
Okay, let's, let's, and, and Dominic, you picked item number three. To increase all the CFDs.
No.
So, ba- basically, it's the low ones, the four hundred dollar ones, not the eight hundred dollar one. And we have a. And we have a second.
And, and this is specifically in?
So everything would be raised excluding?
Everything across the board. We're not, we're.
Wildflower Castle Oaks excluding the four hundred and fifty seven that are paying the higher rate of eight fifty seven.
So.
And they would still pay that eight fifty seven?
They'd pay the eight fifty seven. They just wouldn't get an increase.
I understand that part.
Okay, it'd just go more like that.
So the top two, the four thirty five and the four sixty six would be increased by four percent. Eight fifty seven remains the same for option number three. Option number four is across the board, all three are hit, get a two percent increase.
Yes.
So whose motion is?
So Member Allen's motion is live. We're, we're, if, if Member Rattan's motion does not receive a second, it.
So we start with that. We start with Dominic's motion?
Well, no, is there?
There are a second for.
I seconded.
Yeah.
Seconded Dominic.
Yeah, or either of you going to second my, my motion?
Number four?
There's two, there were two motions on the floor with the.
I'll make a second for Diane's motion, number four.
Then Member Rattan's motion gets voted on first because that motion was made, was made second. So the last motion gets voted on first procedurally. So is that, so call for the, the recommended action, I would be call for the vote of Member Rattan's motion.
Okay.
You want to go all at once, or what's the way to do it, Mr. Attorney? Should we do?
You could do it by voice vote, um, or.
All, all in favor of Councilwoman Rattan's, uh, motion for item number four, increase the amount by percentage using the minimal annual increase of two percent for all CFDs?
No, no.
No.
Yes.
I, you didn't let me finish. I was gonna say all in favor first. All in favor?
Yes.
No's.
No, no.
No. So now, now, now Member Atlin's.
So now we will entertain a motion or we have the motion. We have a first and se- second, all in favor of item number three, increase all CFDs across, excluding two thousand five dash two, one A, number three, as determined by the December twenty twenty three CPI four percent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Where it is.
So just to keep in mind, this does come back to you all as a council. They will have a full workup and this will be, uh, you know, noticed and the, or not noticed, but done in appropriate, in accordance with the Melrose law.
Right, okay.
So you're starting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you both. Don't go anywhere.
We're not.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item number four. Discussion of creating a citywide community facilities vote district for police and fire services.
So I would like to start off by saying this is a city council members' direction, action, not staff necessarily, but we do want to know if this is something the city council's interested in. Like you heard from the CFD committee, they've been looking for some kind of parity. The big thing is try to make it citywide. Um, and that's what's before you today. What we, well, I don't, I'm not going to go into what we've discussed because that's just going to confuse the issue. Um, and we laid it out. Um, we looked it up, what is required if we did want to try to pass something like this? So there's basically seven steps, um, that really spells it out. And then if this is something you guys really think that you want to do and move forwards, then we'll start getting some information to nail down some of this stuff, but we didn't want to put, you know, tons of hours and work into this and you guys go, ah, we're really not thinking citywide. We're thinking something else. So um, I think there's plenty of information in here. Um, as we've discussed this in the last item, um, within, just within Wildflower and Castle Oaks, there's quite a bit of um, in equity about who pays how much. Um, to be honest, I'm not sure if it was citywide, even what percentage of the police and fire budget we would use. But once again, that is something way down the line, if you guys even want to do this. Um, Andrea did reach out to Jim Rooney at the assessor's office just to get some up to date numbers and um, seeing how that would work and some additional information along that. And if you have more questions, once again, Andrea's really been carrying the ball on this for me since I've been working on budget. So we're here to answer any questions. Oh, unless she has some, she might have some more comments.
I'll just give a real quick, uh, quick brief on what I, uh, did as far as the staff report. So um, it's a two thirds vote is what it comes down to. Um, and I reached out to, because when we came to the finance committee, we used the, our sewer connection fees just as a ballpark because we didn't have the data of who would be vote, you know, who, how many parcels were in the city. So I reached out to Jim Rooney to actually get the number of parcels in the city because the two thirds vote is of the parcel owners, which is why this is normally done when a development comes in, because you have one owner for one big parcel and then it gets divvied up and it just follows the house. So it's much harder to get individuals to say yes, because you have to convince them to say yes. So I wanted to give you guys an idea of basically, first of all, the percentage of the population, which is the forty percent population between those two developments. And then, um, the current assessments for police and fire are the four seventy nine, which account for twenty point two, three percent of the police budget, which is the two point three six eight. And then as far as the parcels go, we have parcels, but government parcels don't pay. And so they will not be in that CFD. So I pulled them out for a total of two thousand four hundred and forty four parcels that would be voting. So that means you would basically need, this is just to give you an idea of, you have eight hundred and thirty parcels that currently pay a CFD. And in order to get your two thirds vote passed, you would probably need another eight hundred approximately that currently pay zero to agree to a tax on their property in perpetuity. So it just was to give you an idea, because here's, but basically the last paragraph is everything that needs to happen. We do need to determine, this is not a ballot vote. This is a mail where you go straight to the property owner, so it's not contingent on a ballot deadline. So.
It's not.
Yeah, no, this isn't something you put out. This is something you mail to the actual homeowners. So um, we'd need to determine if we needed to hire a consultant, if there needs to be a full, bigger study, which would be the consultant part. Um, we also need to determine what percentage of the police and fire budget you want to cover. Do you want to cover fifty percent, forty percent? That's why in this staff report, I put that one ninety three fifty nine was just a discussion item only because that's basically just taking all the numbers, spreading it across the lots at the twenty twenty one rate, which that'll already change because we just decided to do an increase. So um, the other thing we need to also determine, you know, how we're going to handle the lighting and landscape. If you did one big CFD, Castle Oaks is the only one that currently has all the landscaping. The rest of the town doesn't have the landscaping and lighting. Um, length of the process, uh, the process. And one of the biggest things is the probability of it, if we're going to spend the time and the money, what's the probability of it actually passing? And then you have other options to where you can just look at getting Castle Oaks into one in parity. And so it's, there's many options we can discuss and bring forward to you if you guys decide that's the way you want to go.
Okay, okay, well, so, Mr. Attorney, not that I don't trust Andrea, but you are, so we don't have to hit an election to do this. This could be done anytime on a mail-in ballot. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, that's great. The, the other thing is, um, two thirds vote. Is that two thirds vote of all of the parcels or two thirds of the people that vote?
It's two thirds of, of the parcels.
So if you don't vote, that's a, a no vote, basically.
That's correct.
Right, right. Um, yeah, I really don't want to see the city spend forty thousand dollars on it. That's not, not the goal. The goal is equity. Um, I think that we could probably, you know, now that we know, essentially, I thought we were under the deadline for June or July, right, to get it on the ballot. But now that we're not, um, I'd like to see, Sutter Creek could do it a similar thing. So I don't think they're spending forty thousand dollars. Um, we have some time now, so we could maybe table this and get some actual numbers. Um, the benefit of this would be this. First of all, if it was citywide, I think everyone will support the police for two hun- and fire for two hundred bucks. Uh, second of all, you eliminate tonight forevermore. You don't come back here every single year. And if you've got three council members that are paying eight hundred and fifty dollars, they're going to vote no. So they could even vote out the CFD that we have now. They can vote it out, okay? On a council level. So it gets rid of that and it puts a lot more security into police and fire. You could build in a CPI four percent or three percent that you don't have to recalculate and you don't have to get permission. Are we going to do two? We're going to do four? So there's a whole bunch of good things in this. Also, what happens when another development comes in? Are you going to charge him a thousand bucks? Because it's got to be more than eight fifty, right? I've already heard that that's not going to fly. So this just takes care of a whole lot of problems down the road. But the big problem is, will eight hundred people or even the eight hundred people that are paying it now, I mean, sixteen hundred people got to vote this in. Is that possible? That's a big, a big lift. I was hoping it was fifty one percent, not two thirds. But I think it should be looked at. Um, personally, as I was pushing this real hard, I'm not, now that you've told me that, uh, which I still can't believe, but the facts are the fact. No, I just, that's, that's actually good news because it gives us some breathing space, so.
Well, and it gives you the data that you can't make.
I would just, you know, my, I'd like to see, uh, let's bring this back with some more numbers now that it's not urgent. Um, we've already decided on hitting the tax roll. And because, you know, if the number's like ten thousand dollars or cheap, then it's more likely to get my vote than if it's like forty thousand dollars. It's going to go nowhere. I, I don't want to waste that kind of money.
Right, so, do I, if I can just clarify, just so I, I, so, um, I just checked, um, in my, uh, with regard to the two thirds, it's two thirds of the votes that have been submitted. So that is, that is a change.
Two thirds of the voting population?
No, two thirds of the votes. So if there's three votes that were submitted, two of them went out to vote in favor.
Okay, that's a huge difference.
It's a big difference. And then, and then second, yeah, second, so, yeah, second on that is that with regard, you can create this at any moment in time, um, with your CFD. The tax roll hits the same time every year. So you would have, so from a timing perspective, uh, you, you are on a, a timing perspective that would be infeasible to, you know, get it on this year's tax roll, given that July is typically the tax roll.
Right.
Um, you know, we'll.
It can go into effect at the next tax.
That's correct. That's, it, it's, it's just not subject to the, you know, the general election balloting that's going out in voter registration.
Right, okay.
So now that we have this and we are not under a gun.
Yeah, which is always nice.
Which is always nice. I, I, I would like to have this really dug into and I would like the CFD committee to do that because this is their, this is their deal. They've been deep in this and I would like, and I would like them to work closely with Andrea to come up with all of these, all of these answers that you're looking for at the bottom of this. Um, or as best they can. And then make some recommendations and hopefully they're the same as the staff's recommendations for this, which would be helpful, but not necessarily a game changer. Um, but I do want to, I would like to see, you know, what this would look like. And I'd also like to see it extrapolated out to any potential new builds. Um, what it would look like. And how that would be handled going forward.
I just have a clarifying question. Do you want us just to stick with the thought of just doing citywide? Or do you want us to see what other recommendations the CFD comes up with?
Well, I, at this point, we go a citywide, which would be everybody.
Okay.
Um, that doesn't change the existing CFDs because they're still there. So they're still what they are.
Right.
So we would look at the citywide, what it brings, what the CFDs that exist are, what can be done with those to move, you know, get them either in parity or removed completely if this is, is reasonable and financially feasible. Um, then you have, you know, the new construction potentially coming in. What would that look like and what does that add to this? And, you know, that's, that's an unknown factor, but we can extrapolate to some degree. Uh, and, and then we can see, you know, what, what that looks like. Um, and, you know, how we sell that, then from there, we would have to sell that to the, the city. You know, the people of the city are, are they, and, and as for the landscaping and lighting, um, I, in my opinion, that doesn't belong in here. This is fire and police, period, as far as I'm concerned. Um, you know, landscaping and lighting is lovely and Castle Oaks can take care of their own landscaping and lighting. If they had a homeowners association, that would be on them. Um, they would take care of that because, you know, the city took this on. Now it's our problem, but on a citywide basis, I, I don't, that isn't something that I think is appropriate.
Yeah, and I don't think that was ever a discussion.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, that, I don't, that should not be part of this at all. Um, but that would be my, that would be my wish, my recommendation. And I don't know how the, I don't know how the CFD committee feels about it. They're probably groaning and moaning because not another meeting sets, but.
So what's your, uh, I don't even know how to put that into a motion.
Well, you haven't taken public comment yet either, so.
That's a, that's, that's kind of where, that's where I'm coming from with this. That seems to me to be a reasonable approach.
And you guys got all of that?
And we do need people on the CFD committee. We're short two people, so I'm just putting that out there too. Not that you guys want to, but just anyone in the audience that might want to be on the CFD, we're looking.
Okay. Do we have any more?
I, I have a comment, so I'm.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead. No, I just have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm one of the ones that have lived here forever and I don't pay a CFD or whatever. And I have never called the fire department. I put my own fires out and I don't call nine one one. I have my own gun, as John knows. But with that said, the most expensive thing in this town, and it's not, I don't think it's police, it's fire, is Josie's place. That place gets like seventy five percent of the calls. Is that some butt correct, Jack? Like six hundred calls a year.
Yes.
I think we should go after places like that. That's where Station Two should have been built. I thought, put it in their parking lot. They don't have Turner's irons arm. Just walk to the door and help them. But that is a big expense to the city is Josie's place. So, and I don't have sidewalks. I don't have landscaping, you know, P G Nitas are lighting, so. Just, just wanted to say that, so.
Well, I'm going to open it up to public comment because I can just feel you guys wanting to.
Well, Gary Thomas again. Citizen, one twenty five Maple Street. I sit on the CFD committee. Stacy, they're either going to condemn my house or your house for that fire station to service Josie, so watch it, dude. Um, I have a lot of comments on this. Is this the, Andy, this will be the two eighteen process as it goes through? Are you identifying it as the two eighteen process?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Go ahead.
So it's not in two eighteen process. It's under Melrose.
Okay, all right. So um, we talked about a lot of this so forth at the finance committee, so rest assured, Diane. Um, we, we were talking about that, but I had some comments on myself. Could this be predicated on the sale of a home for the homeowner when that comes under the, this fee? I was wondering if that could happen. I heard rumors that it could be just as a block, but it could be predicated under the sale of a home. So these are some of the questions I think I'd want answered as we go down.
You mean this, after it goes into effect, when it's sold?
Eighty years old or some old guy like me, twenty seven. Um, can't afford anything but a new hot rod. Um, do you, do we go after them for the, for the CFD monies or, or do we? Or, or do we have them come in when the?
When they sell the house, I see.
So there's a thought there. So, and there's.
And you're on the CFD committee.
Yeah, no. So anyway, I was just asking. But a lot of your developers, when they come in, they really don't care about what the cost of it is because they're going to pass, that's a pass on to the next person. So that's how they get into all this inequities and so forth. They don't care. They'll, yeah, sign me up. I'll buy into it. And they think they're getting a good sweetheart deal with the city and favor from the city. And it's just passed on to the next one. So the L L M Ds, which is a landscape, lighting and maintenance districts, yeah. There's no nexus for somebody like Stacy or I to, all that. Yeah, we know all that at the, um, at the finance committee level and so forth. So this will be an interesting one as it goes through the process because I think. I think whether you need the fire department or not, everybody, or, and the police, everybody realizes the value in that. So to have somebody come in and so forth, asking somebody to come in and buy into all this is gonna be interesting as it goes down. So, there's a lot of people, I hear comments, I'm gonna pick on myself a little bit, but the city as well. A lot of people pay for the upgrades, like for water, you can hit me when you want, Dominic with that one, and sewer, as you go through your rate studies. But we didn't need a bigger plant, so if people like me already feel like that we're paying into different things that we shouldn't have paid into, our plant was big enough, this and that, so forth, so there's that thought out there as well. This, this'll be an interesting one going through the process, thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Andy Algalera, 279 Spring Creek Drive, one question for the attorney now. You said mail, you're gonna send these ballots to the mail, and if that ballot don't come back, it's a no vote?
Go ahead, go ahead, Andy.
So that, yeah, I, I corrected my statement, that was, that was an incorrect statement, it's two thirds vote of the, of the ballots received.
Okay, now, when you're gonna have a mail-in, are you guys gonna deliver them door to door?
We're not gonna do this here.
Because I got a problem with you sending them in the mail, because a lot of times I don't get my mail, a lot of times I get my neighbor's mail, and I always take my mayor, mail to my neighbor, but I know a few times I've never got my mail because I was late on a bill. And they said they sent it, so that would, that's number one thing that worries me about this voting on something that's very important to the city of, I own and us taxpayers. So if you're gonna do a, a mail-in, I, I recommend that you deliver door to door, and make sure everybody gets one. Cause I guarantee you, you won't get, half of them won't get done, won't get it in the mail. And another thing, I bought my house 35 years ago. And when I bought my house, I read all the paperwork, what I had to pay and what I didn't have to pay. And, and for you guys to go ahead and start adding on more stuff to my, uh, taxes, I think it's a bunch of bullshit, cause I've already paid my share, 35 years of taxes. And when I, like I said, people say, well, we're paying this, well, when you buy the house, you're supposed to read all the fine print. And, and every one of those houses that were sold, these new houses, it says right in there what you have to pay. So if you don't wanna pay the fee, don't buy the house. And in other words, like, I got property in Sutter Creek, and I've been paying up to the, been paying taxes on that property almost 100 years. I mean, you know, the same thing, and they use that money for everything. And to tell me that a new subdivision comes in, builds 100 homes, so we all have to pay the same as he does, that's not right. And another thing, like I, I went over to Folsom the other day, I was gonna stop, but we were late for what we were gonna do. They're building a new fire station over there in that new subdivision, who do you think paid for that? The subdivision, and I own, you guys let them build stuff, and you don't get shit for. Build a park over there in that new subdivision, and I asked and asked, I told them, make a little park for the kids, and everybody said, oh, no, 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 cost too much money. So I mean, if you guys are gonna do this, you're not gonna, that's not fair for us that's been here forever, has to pay for what you guys are doing, I think it's crazy. You know, I'm sorry if you don't have no money, and they raise my taxes every year, go get more money from the county.
Yeah, we'd like to.
Well-
We tried.
Yeah. But I'm telling you, if you send it in the mail, half of the people won't get them. And you're gonna have a big problem, so, door to door, deliver them and deliver them, and get somebody to sign off that you give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Larry Rhodes, I'd like to know how many councilmen pay CDFs? You do?
I did.
How can they vote on this?
I, I don't pay one.
I don't pay one either. And we're not actually voting on it.
The ones that do, how they, they get to vote on this?
The reason that they-
That's money out of their pocket.
Public comment.
Anyway, you don't have to comment, I know. Uh, the other thing is, is I just mentioned 943,000 dollars, about 50,000, that was last year, on a sewer. You divide that by about 5,000, that's a hundred dollars a person. Here, they're bitching about 400 dollars.
Guys, and you're so vanity, I'm just gonna have to mention it, you can get your point across without swearing.
What now?
Thank you, Mayor.
You can get your point across very well without using profanity, please.
Oh, sorry about that. But anyway, I'm paying, that's a hundred dollars, I'm paying. And I didn't even ask to pay for it, you never got a vote to do that, they just did it. And that's the water, the gosh darn golf course that I don't even play on. Now around my house, I don't gain one thing by that, and never have. And it just burns me that the CDFs are supposed to be for the police and fire. I had them paid for, like Andy said, when I got here. I was on the fire department for almost 18 years, spent a lot of time on the fire department. And the whole thing is here, these developers come in, they don't do nothing, what happened to the walking path on Village 8? Where's it, supposed to have been there? The, the water flooded, cause they never cleaned out the moo creek. Where's anything about that, never mentioned, I got pictures of it if you'd like to see it. Um, it just burns me, you wanna keep raising our taxes and make it equal for somebody that didn't read his contract? And if they have a problem with it, they should go to the realtor if they didn't read it. My brother-in-law pays that. He don't bitch about it, cause he read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Mayor, can I make one clear?
Yes, you may.
Just to make certain that we don't have any miscommunication with the public.
So just to be clear, um, to the council, that when you're doing these CFDs and you, and you're looking at a citywide, you're not gonna be able to charge for the existing services, so I wanna just make that clear, I'm hearing that from the, from the public, is that that's a concern. I mean, it would be for the augmentation of that, and that would all come out in your, in your engineering report. Typically, um, a, an existing member that is, that has been, you know, that's within the city, um, cannot be, pay a tax for services that are, that are existing at the time that their home was built, and there's no district that's involved, so that, that's why these are typically for new developments, and when new developments come in, it's not for the new service, they're not getting new police service, they're getting, they're, they're paying for their portion of augmenting an existing service, and then lighting and landscaping are, are specific to that area, that, that's gonna pay for that lighting landscaping. So just to, you know, I wanna be clear, and so that you all, in, in your discussions in the community, it would not be a new tax on an existing, you know, somebody here that's living in the downtown area.
I'm, I'm hoping everybody hears this. It's, it, do you wanna say that last sentence one more time? I don't think the back heard you.
So the, yeah, the, the bottom line is, is that any, if you were looking at a citywide CFD, a citywide CFD is not gonna be able to tax existing residents or services that they're already receiving.
Thank you.
Mike Evans, um, CFD, uh, our, I own residence and CFD payer. My first comment is, wow. Okay, um, I'm in, I'm in favor of an election. And I'm glad that, that council clarified the, the, uh, the rules for the election. I think there's a little bit more better chance of it passing. But again, if it doesn't pass, I would like to tie it to straightening out the inequities within the CFDs. And that can be done by what I previously said, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Dave Livingstone, Wildflower. Um, uh, I thought that, uh, Ms. Ratten had a good point in saying that whatever we look at, this should be for police and fire, that the landscaping and lighting, that's a different issue. I also think that when you have 60% of the town not participating in supporting police and fire, that's an issue. Now, people have to make up their own minds, this is America, and if you want something for free, you can vote that way. But I can guarantee you, the police and fire departments will suffer. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any more public comment on item number four?
My name's George Foden, Wildflower. My understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but people that have been living in this town for 35 years has been contributing to fire and police, because it's, they pay property taxes, and out of your property taxes, there's a portion that goes to the city for fire and police. There's also a portion for, you guys need bigger businesses in this town to help out, because there's a portion of sales tax that goes to the city and stuff like that. And I think where the city is hurting is they don't have enough businesses to help with the sales tax. But I think these people that have lived here a long time shouldn't have to pay any extra taxes. Us new people that came in with the development, because I've known people that have been chief of police before in Sutter Creek and, and towns, and when a new development comes in there, the developer needs to come in and develop it, put the money on the taxes, on the tax bill, and you pay your portion for the police with, on, on a brand-new person, because that's not fair to the people that lived here. And I'm willing to pay for the police and fire, because I've had two incidents in this town where I've called them, and they're here. I have a house in San Jose, you call 911, and you call at 7 o'clock at night, they wait till the next shift, 9 o'clock to come out. I had a business, and, and that was the business, I had so much vandalism, because I was right there in the homeless camp where it was, and it was a pain in the ass. But I think if you're coming in here and you buy a brand-new home, you pay your fair, the taxes, and you pay for your share for the police, because that's not fair for the city or anybody else to pay for my protection that I just came into. And I think that's the way it should work, I don't think it really needs to go on a ballot or anything. It's just when you buy a new home, you pay the property amount of property taxes, you have that fee on there, and you pay for it, and like people said, you need to read it, I, I understand that stuff, that it's, it's your obligation to pay this stuff, because that's where it's supposed to be at. It's not somebody that's lived here 30 or 40 years ago. Because like Stacy, he's paying fire and police, he just doesn't use it, because if he has a house, he's got property taxes, right? And out of those property taxes, my understanding is, part, part of that does go to fire and police. And if somebody new comes in, hey, if you want protection, you need to pay for it. So, I think that's, I don't think you really need to go through sending out ballots and voting and stuff like that. You know, and it's basically not on the developer, but the developer does have to pay up there, but it goes into your property taxes. So he's, it's really not coming out of his pocket, because now I live here, I paid taxes for three years, and I paid for police and fire.
Give one minute, George.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, any more public comment on item number four? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we're gonna move on to number five, discussion of Waterstone LLC contract.
So there, so just to clarify for Janice, no action on that item, direction given to staff to work with the-
Staff on this?
Are you, or is that what is-
I'm kinda trying to move right along so fast, right?
So, um, yeah, remember Ratten had some direction, if there's no, if there's consensus on the board to, to push that down, there's no action required. If there is some opposition, I'd recommend the motions.
Push it down.
Yeah, unless it-
So no action?
Explore it, yeah.
Yeah.
We wanna explore it with the CFD committee?
Yeah, I do.
So direction, so the, the, it'd be direction to staff to work with the CFD committee to explore options for, um, you know, financing of the police and fire. So, uh, C manager, uh, Lee brings up a good point, um, I'm gonna ask for timing as far as, uh, you know, bringing back a report. I'll look to staff for that, and bring up, and let staff report back to you all so that they can have like a good sense of when they can bring good work product back to you. I would be guessing if I'd, if I'd be recommending anything right now.
And how many committee members do you need to?
Okay, can we, can we put out a, a flyer on the webpage that, asking for members to, for the CFD?
You what? The newsletter?
And the new, but in the newsletter and on the webpage, and on the Facebook page.
And we did that. You did that?
Get any response.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Try it again. Definition of insanity.
Well, it might get a better response now, it's kinda moving along, and there's a lot more information being provided, and there's, it's actually happening, I think before, it just was inconsistent, that the information was inconsistent, the committee meetings were inconsistent. So, we'll give it a shot again. Okay, so no direction?
Yeah, it's, it's given.
Yeah, direction, direction's been given.
It's just been a really-
The timeframe.
And now we're gonna move on to number four. Number five. Uh, do we need, do we have a staff report on that, or we, do we just wanna hear from Waterstone? Presentation?
It's just a discussion of, of the renewal of the contract, you know, in terms of whether you wanna continue it, stick to other sources, but Kathy, you wanna say anything?
We're done, or just? No Stafford part?
No.
Hi, Kathy Stone, Waterstone Services. Uh, yeah, George contacted me and asked when our contract would be up for renewal, and it's June 26, and there's a, a possible three-year extension on there, so, um, we wanted to get it to the, to the meeting sooner than later, um, and we're very pleased with the operations there. We're moving forward on, um, putting together a quote to save the city about 60, 70,000 dollars, we're gonna do the work ourselves. Um, also looking into some of the work that West Joseph's doing that we can possibly do and save the city some money. I sent out some, we had a great meeting with, um, Diane and Dominic on the wastewater side. We gave them a presentation of all the things that we fixed, we, we found timers in a box that had been removed, just a lot of different things that we, we fixed around the plant, and that moving forward, a capital improvement program to introduce, um, things to facilitate the operations out there. I also sent them an email with the certifying the lab through my license, um, and that was, I showed them the savings and the upfront costs, the capital costs, and then moving forward, we can do it in-house, we can have the results, you know, in 24 hours, which would be very handy, especially for the coliforms, so, um, no, and then I'll let Justin introduce himself.
Hello, everybody, I'm Justin Granados, and, uh, I manage the, uh, tertiary and wastewater treatment plant. Um, yeah, um, I enjoy what I'm doing, there's a lot to get done there. Um, but I know with, uh, with your help, council, uh, we'll be able to make these improvements and, uh, get that place in tip-top shape. Thank you.
I haven't-
You haven't met Justin yet?
No, I mean, I haven't seen any capital improvement plan.
No, we're just, I started, uh, working on it with Amy, um, but we're gonna be working on it with George. And so, and we talked about some of those things with the meeting with, um, Diane and Dominic as well.
Okay.
So.
And does any of this fall under our city engineering scope? I'm just curious.
Uh, I would, I would think it would have to be reviewed by the city, um, engineer. At some point, I mean, once we see what it is.
Yeah, and I was working with, yeah, I was working with the city engineer too on the S S M P that needs to be submitted to the state sanitary sewer management plan. And so I sent in to Jordan about 14, 15 comments, and so we need to get that submitted as well, but been working that with the city engineer on that too. So.
Great.
So have we come, have we clarified the 50,000, 34 tertiary, or 24 tertiary, 30 for wastewater, or is it vice versa?
It's 50 for both.
Okay.
Combined.
Okay, so they're, it's applied to both.
Correct.
Across the board.
And I, and I sent a letter to George explaining kind of the whole process.
And that, that, those ones are used for-
Right, outside contractors, like-
PV line, things like that.
Telstar, when they come to calibrate, things like that, yes.
Okay, alright, so we did get that clarified?
Yes, I sent that to George last Friday.
Great. Alright, and is there, uh, I, I'm trying-
All right, and is there, I, I'm trying to find the cost for the next term of your contract.
It's, it's like the CPI that they were just talking about. It has a max of four percent.
So it'll be an increase of four percent?
Oh, yes, or lower.
It's a, it's a one-year term that you entered into last year in June. And then there's the op, there's the, there was options of mutually agreed-upon extensions.
With an increase of, with an increase of four percent, a max of four percent.
That's correct.
So is that something that we are here to discuss now? I mean, there's no, there's, this is just a discussion at this point, correct?
Good direction.
Is there a recommendate, is there staff report attached to this?
No.
So there's.
So you want, we want, we can't really give, I mean, I don't know that I can give back direction at this point without, I mean, we're looking to, this is coming up in, you said, June twenty-sixth, it expires?
Yes. Um. So we need to get it on the next.
We need to have a, I mean, it's got, we've got to make this decision now.
Yeah.
I mean, basically.
Yeah.
We, at least by the next.
I can bring it back at the next council meeting with.
If you could draw, yeah, if, we can get some hard numbers and what, what that looks like. And it would be nice if we could include the information that you had provided for the, the labs and in the, any of the other upgradings that you had outlined, where that fits in in this.
Okay.
Or doesn't, is over and above, you know, whatever, however that's going to work.
Okay, sure.
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
So that we can actually have a, a clear idea of what exactly your plan is, what you're doing, and where, where we could go with you for, for the next term of the contract.
Sure. Would you have your CIP?
What was that?
Would you have your?
Well, it's based on the San Francisco CIP, so.
No, your improvements that you want to make out of the?
Oh, the capital improvement. Yeah, Justin and I have been kind of putting together a list.
Would you, could, could you have that?
Yes.
And then I remember Councilman Mitchell asking if you guys had started an SOP.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we've got the O and M manual, and we're going off that. We're also making JSAs for each project that we do. So yes, we have all that on the site. We're also working on I-Works, which is the computerized maintenance system that, with the city.
Yeah.
And so Justin's been working on that and incorporating the equipment and things in there too, so.
Okay.
I'll get a lot more information.
Okay, that'd be great.
Use some options.
Any other council questions?
Nope.
Okay, I'll open this up for public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, anyone on Zoom, Janice? Nope. Okay, we'll close public comment on item number five. Next up, reports and communications from city attorney.
I have none.
You have none. Reports and communications from city manager.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor LaFane. I see Mr. What's his name? Caputo in the audience, and very happy, very happy to see you, sir. I'm happy to see you up and at it, so I know you were in recovery for a long time, so nice to see you, sir. But anyway, just a couple items to report. The Depot Park is finally moving forward.
Yeah.
So, I think the public will see a lot of activity out there over the next few weeks. So, it's all been approved. I made sure that we have all the documentation, so that is moving forward. So, and that's the entire park, including the bathrooms. So, the whole thing's been approved. Also, we finalized a draft user agreement for the BMX bike track, which has been forwarded to Renee Hanson for her review. And at some point, we will refer that to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I'm sorry, is this the Donnie Tillery?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In terms of memorial parks, that is moving forward as well. Mr. Mitchell has graciously offered his time and services to help in that regard in terms of.
Oh, this is for the bench?
Owen's family bench, as well as the sheer, sheer memorial bench as well. So, thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
And.
And the police department as well is.
Well, actually, yeah, quite a few people are jumping in.
It's really.
Police Department is going to fund the bench. Thomas Borg is here. He is going to fund all of the groundwork, the concrete. And Jonathan is donating the plan, sketching the plan out. I know I'm forgetting something.
The Police Officers Association.
Yes, the, the foundation.
It's not coming out of you.
Foundation, not the police officers. Be clear.
Okay. No, and I, I'm just happy and the family's very happy that, you know, this is moving forward and it's got a little momentum. And hopefully we can get something into place before, like I said, it gets to be, you know, a hundred and five degrees. But they're, they're very excited, and they're very grateful. And a really nice family, so I think it's gonna be a great time for everybody to kind of come together.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, you moving it forward, George.
Also, we'll be starting discussions with the police officers associations very, very shortly with respect to their new contract. So I'll be informing you in the very near future on the status of that. Also, Mr. Mackey wanted to extend his, his information that they are starting a lot of fire abatement process throughout the city. In that regard, I think the last time we spoke was, you mentioned the propane issue. So you asked that an amendment be made to the propane tank ordinance prohibiting all propane tanks within the city limits. So the first reading of the amended ordinance will be on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. The public hearing, the second reading and adoption of the amended ordinance will be set for June fourth meeting. And then the ordinance will be effective in thirty days after adoption, so that, that'd be moving forward. And that's about it.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And one more thing, I'd like to, you know, commend, you know, Jody and Andrea and all the staff members. They've been working extremely hard to get the information out on a timely basis. Jody did hire two more new people to replace the, the front office person and also someone else to help them process things. So they've been working extremely hard to get the information out, so I'd like to commend Jody, Andrea, and all the staff members, Jordan, everybody, and so. That's about it.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Council comments, committee reports, future agenda items. Councilman Atlin.
Parks Unracked Meeting, a couple of weeks ago, they discussed, one of the things they'd like to see is some more shade. This is a public comment, more shade at Perryo Park from the shade structures. And the committee itself reported that they fired thirteen people for the seasonal pool opening. Pool opens Saturday, June eighth. There's gonna be a movie on Friday, May the third, at Picnic Hill. And there was discussion about the benches and memorial benches and the trees, and that's moving forward. And also, there was, the fees were adopted by the Parks Commission that now needs to go to council. But the fees look like a big hike, but they're really, like, they're, they used to be à la carte, and now they're the Happy Meal. So, that's what I call it. So instead of having something that's two hundred plus two hundred plus two hundred plus two hundred, now it's just, you know, eight all in. And, but it does look high if you just look at it that way, but it's actually about the same. I think that was it with parks. What I'd like to see at a future council meeting is like a review of our purchasing policy, our spending policy. We just saw that, you know, somehow, I knew that we were gonna have a problem with wastewater because you see the warrants every month or every couple of months. You know, three hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars got spent. And I didn't know about it until it was pointed out by finance. So, it's, you know, there's various things. Is it five thousand? Is it fifteen thousand? Is it fifty thousand? It seems that new information's come out that if the city manager spends a thousand, they gotta report it to the council. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows, all the departments know what they can spend, what they can't spend, and how it gets reported so that we don't get into a situation like that again. Luckily, that, that fund had some reserves in it. But if it didn't, then it would not have been a good thing. So, just like to go over that policy, that's all. Yeah, that's it for me.
You, Finance Committee met, you already heard all that. We just did it. We did it all. You, you heard everything we did. For a agenda item, I would like to see a contract review. I'd like a cheat sheet of all of our contracts with start date, expired date, and departments that they're working with, they're in as informational for, and so we can see when, you know, we're not two months before the contract expires. We can be six months before the contract expires and we bring it to, you know, bring it to the general council.
That's it?
That's it.
Councilman Rhodes?
Yeah, I'd like to keep the pressure on Castle Oaks, Mr. Hahn, Trune, whoever get the financials.
I did speak with him recently, and he did say he was going to forward the, the tax returns. There has been some transition issues with the new management company, so they are going to give us the, the tax returns, which in essence is the same, but it's where they're gonna be reporting more totals as opposed to into a breakdown of all the costs. So, but the total numbers will be the same, so I will again request those, but he did say he was gonna forward those.
Is this current, or are we still saying that we've never gotten any financials?
This is for the past three years, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-three.
And it's the city's position, we've never received any financials from Castle Oaks?
I think that we've received some, but I have been, not been able to locate them, so.
We've charged them, so.
We've charged them, so we had to have something, yeah.
I have not been able to locate them yet.
Okay, the mystery.
And another thing I'd like to say, this is the first time in probably twenty years that I saw before Homecoming that, and I'd like to thank Public Works, Caltrans, PG&E was even out there, fire department cleaned up the entrance to Howard Park for Homecoming. They had the whole ION, Caltrans crew out there brushing and doing all kinds of stuff, so I haven't seen that happen for years, so. Wanted to publicly thank them, so.
Yeah, it does look nice, and all the trash is picked up too. They're coming again.
Caltrans gets bashed all the time, so they gotta give them attaboy once in a while.
I'll make sure Mr. Mackey and Public Works get the message.
So for me, I guess one of the things I'd like to look at is the, they call them the island properties, the property between the golf course and the homeowners. I've had some folks that have called concerned that they don't know if they're to handle the area.
I call them orphaned properties.
Or for the island.
We can combine it, we'll just call them the island.
Getting the growth in that, which is obviously a fire and safety danger, but we need to find out what we're gonna do with those little pieces.
I did speak with Mr. Politi the other day, and so there was some discussion with Mr. Mackey and Mr. Panasco with respect to deeding some of the surplus property to the small sections, to the adjacent homeowners. So I'd have to follow the protocol of the surplus government protocol, so we're looking into that right now.
Cool. Now, we tried that a couple of times, actually. We did offer to give it to them, but we found out people like Andy would jump in and say, oh no, it needs to go to bid, you need to spend a hundred thousand dollars on surveys and blah, 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 blah. So maybe Andy's better than the past ones.
I'm gonna try to find out what, what is in the surplus protocol.
And Coastland, just so you know, already has all those documents, all the parcel numbers and all that stuff. So we have that somewhere, it's just Andy needs to grab it and.
It's with the financials from Castle Oaks.
Believe, I believe Mackey has copies of the island property or the orphaned properties. Homecoming, obviously coming up. I agree with Stacy, it was amazing to see all the work. I'd like to thank all the volunteers that are putting this thing together, and certainly all the sponsors. It looks to be incredible from the pieces I've seen. Lots of new events and lots of old favorite events. Please be safe, have a good time. It is my understanding I will be in the dunk booth. So if that doesn't get you out there, I don't know it will. I'm not going to tell you what time.
Chief Alfred's gonna be in there too, if anyone wants to.
So you might have a couple shots at different things, but hope to see everyone out at Homecoming and certainly thank.
This is Saturday, right?
Saturday, Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
Saturday's the day I'm in the booth.
Okay.
Then they brought the.
They'll probably put us in together.
I don't blame you.
Anyway, I just hope to see everybody out there and please be safe, have a good time, enjoy the fireworks and everything else, so, thank you.
Uh, yeah, just a comment on Homecoming. This year, they've got the rodeo back. They're gonna have some rough stock, some bulls and broncs and.
Some top riders.
They got some top riders, thanks to Mr. Borg, who donated quite a bit of added money so they could get some top competitors here. Jeff Gold's running that. He's pretty excited. You know how he gets when he sees buck and shoots. This is, he just turns into a real cowboy. So, yeah, they were setting those up today when I drove by. And I think the kid stuff starts at noon on Saturday. They got the lead line. There's mutton busting on Friday night, I think, and then the adult party at six o'clock on Saturday.
You have the pancake feed. Pancake feed.
Yeah, that's Saturday morning, right?
That's what really starts for me, sorry. It's the pancakes.
We went from mutton busting to pancake feed, like a split second.
You know where mine works.
Yeah.
Fun mind works.
I wanted to follow up on the in-person training for commission.
Yeah, so that, the, the commission has reached out to me. I responded to them that I'm, can provide the training, so we're working.
I think you're gonna have to tell them when it happens.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll work with them to schedule, but they, they are aware, we are communicating about it. And through Mayor, or City Manager Lee and Janice as the clerk, we'll get the agendas put together for them.
Okay. And I, I don't want to bog you down, Mr. Lee, any further, but we, Economic Development Committee. Like to kind of get that on the calendar. I need a heads up ahead of time if it's gonna be any time in the afternoon. I mean, I'd prefer it if we could do it at six o'clock. Instead of, you know, I think, I think normally it was at one or two o'clock in the afternoon, but.
Who's on that committee?
Myself and Vice Mayor Ratten. And we had quite a little plan put together last year, and it never came to fruition, but there were some great ideas tossed around, doing a workshop with the local businesses and kind of collaborating with them. I don't have it in front of me, but it was.
Bring it to the meeting.
Bring, I'll bring it to them.
I'm very available now in the afternoons. You're still in training.
No, but I do work till five, sometimes six. But.
Five-thirty.
If I know, if I know ahead of time, I can, I can arrange it.
Five-thirty's okay.
Yeah.
Five-thirty's fine.
Drive fast.
As long as it's not in the same week if we have finance or council.
And I, and I, you know, honestly, I think just once a quarter, economic development could meet once a quarter. It doesn't need to be.
There's a lot of things that I would share with you.
Yeah, great. Okay. I get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.